Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, May 2, 2022. Call this meeting to order at 6:30, 2 PM. Recognition of members present, the entire council is present, and I'd like to invite you all to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, the truly representative of our nation, can give this all, and everything we have to offer.
Thank you very much. Under general, this evening, we have two proclamations. First is the City of Saco Office of the Mayor, 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 1 through May 7, 2022, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of governments at other levels, and whereas the professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, William Doyle, Mayor of Saco, do recognize the week of May 1 through May 7, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our profession, excuse me, professional municipal clerk, Michelle Hughes, and to all the professional municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Signed this day of May 2022 by the mayor of the City of Saco, Maine. Thank you. General Item B is another proclamation. City of Saco Office of the Mayor, a bee-friendly community, whereas three-fourths of flowering plants and 35% of the world's food crops depend on pollinating species such as bees, according to the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and whereas, in North America, most native bee species are declining, and nearly one in four species are at risk of extinction from habitat loss, pesticide use, climate change, and urbanization, according to the Center for Biological Diversity, and whereas flower nectar is the essential food for native bees, honeybees, and other pollinators, and is in scarce supply in May prior to the summer flower bloom, and whereas typical lawns are not pollinator-friendly, but lawns that are not mowed in May support nectar plants such as violets, clover, and dandelions that can provide valuable early summer food for pollinators, and whereas peer-reviewed research revealed that lawns allowed to grow taller do not harbor ticks, but instead are consequential for beneficial wildlife and other ecosystem services associated with urban biodiversity, and whereas gas-powered lawn mowers produce health-damaging pollution, e.g., 13 billion pounds of toxins per year, according to the EPA, and whereas other city councils and mayors in U.S. towns and cities, including Rockland, Maine, Appleton, Wisconsin, and others in Iowa, Minnesota, Illinois, Montana, have previously endorsed "No mow May" in effort to support pollinators and contribute positively to the environment, and whereas, on September 21, 2020, the City of Saco acknowledged through a declaration that a climate and econo, excuse me, ecological emergency threatens our city, state, nation, civilization, humanity, and the natural world, and whereas, at its April 20, 2022, monthly meeting, the City of Saco's mayor-appointed Conservation Commission unanimously supported declaring "No mow May" for Saco. Now therefore, I, William Doyle, in recognition of the vital significance of protecting pollinators' health, do declare my support for bee-friendly community. By this, I am encouraging residents of Saco during May to pause or reduce the frequency of lawn mowing, either in a portion or the entirety of their lawns, for the reasons stated above, and in order to reduce the harmful lawn mower emissions and support the pollinators during this nectar-scarce time of the year. Signed this day of May 2022 by the Office of the Mayor, City of Saco, Maine. Thank you. That brings us to Item 5. Any committee correspondents at this time? Committee correspondents to council? Councilor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Conservation Commission is very appreciative of the declaration of a bee-friendly community. They've done significant work on "No mow May," and would like to encourage all residents to pause or stop mowing their lawns in May. They've done a significant amount of research. It does not increase the incidence of ticks or other unwanted pests in your yard, and does allow bees to thrive in our community, which is essential for our flowers and our agriculture and general quality of life.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondents to council? Moving on to Item 6, public comment. Two folks have signed up for public comment this evening. Bear with me. Up first is Rob Biggs. For those coming up to public comment, please keep your comments to three minutes, speak directly into the microphone, and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rob Biggs, and I'm a resident of Saco at 92 Middle Street. Mayor Doyle, city council, city staff, community members, thank you for this time. I understand the question of my residency and therefore ability to serve on the planning board has been resolved. That said, there is also a concern over my Board of Director membership for a nonprofit in Brunswick, the Brunswick Downtown Association. This is a Main Street program similar to our Saco Main Street. When I retired from Saco Main Street after six years of service to our community, this organization asked me to be on their board as they had high regard for Saco Main Street and felt that I might be able to bring some of my expertise, experience, and ideas to their organization. So my question to you is, does board membership of an organization outside of Saco prohibit you from serving as a member of a board, commission, or even public office in Saco? Organizations such as the Animal Rescue League in Kennebunk, the Children's Museum in Portland, or Seeds &amp; Hope in Bitterford. If this is true, then I believe that you are dramatically reducing the potential pool of civic-minded individuals who are giving of their time and want to serve their hometown in addition to other organizations. I would suggest that if you're planning to go down this rabbit hole, you might look at your own council members and members of every other board and commission for folks that are volunteer board members on other boards and outside of Saco, because they're out there, and I know they're out there because I'm not the only one. I am, however, just a little curious, after years and years of mayoral appointments, why suddenly now I would be singled out as to my residency and loyalty to Saco. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next is Kelly Archer.
I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. For the record, I would like to thank those members, Councilor and Planning Board Liaison Purdy, Councilor and former Planning Board Liaison Johnston, Councilor Hatch, Councilor Berman, Councilor Gunn, and Administrator Kainrath, who were able to attend last week's planning board meeting in regards to the Ecology School, two public hearings, and in response to Inger Brown and my previous letters of noncompliance of Section 179, site plan review as required by the Council Contract Zone Agreement, and Section 230-1104 Site Plan Review Submission Requirements, upon which we will follow up and forward another detailed synopsis of our 42622 findings to you for your review and consideration. Again, thank you all who could attend, that attended. Much appreciated. In regards to the budget and financial matters at this time, I am in support of the amendments of the ARPA IT Zoom Hybrid and the dredging, and leave the amount to you members, and also please confirm the HPC funding from fiscal year 2022 from $10,500 to $5,000. Thanks so much.
Thank you. That is it for those that have signed up for public comment. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak, please come forward and be heard.
Good evening. My name is Jane Karen, 264 Lincoln Street in Saco, and I want to thank the Conservation Commission and your proclamation, Mayor Doyle, for a bee-friendly community, and I understand the "No mow May" part of it, but I also would love to see Saco embrace a bee-friendly community in other ways as well throughout the year. So I think that's a great first step, and if we could keep that going, that would be fantastic. I think it's a positive for Saco for sure, for the world as well. And as far as the budget, you know, the County Dredge Initiative, Age Friendly Saco, which I support and help volunteer at, Police Cruisers, there's so much in the budget that I'm sure you'll make some really great decisions in support of what Saco really needs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. Seeing no other speakers, moving on from public comment to approval of the minutes. There are no minutes to approve. Brings us to Item 8, consent items, and that is the nomination of election clerks for 2022-2024. Item A is our motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
By Counselor Hatch, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve the consent agenda. Brings us to Item 9, which is action items. Item A is a tabled motion confirming mayor's reapportments to the planning board of Rob Biggs and Alyssa Bhutat. Page 6 in your packet, is there a motion to untable?
So moved.
Counselor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Roll call vote on table. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to untable passes 7-0. Brings us to the original item, which was read into the record last week. It was, there was a second on that item, so the item before you is be it ordered that the city council confirm the mayor's reappointment of Rob Biggs and Alyssa Bhutat to the planning board for a three-year term from May 2, 2022 to May 2, 2025. Any further discussion on this, on this motion? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when this came to my knowledge at our last meeting about the question of residency with Mr. Biggs, I decided to do my own research, and it actually came out to be in his favor. I did the Cumberland County Registry Deeds, I know what city he has a property in, I looked up the property tax card, and I looked up the property tax card, and when I looked at it, he does not take the Homestead Act exemption in his other residence, and his actual home of record written is Saco. So for me, the evidence shows that he is a resident, so just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, no further discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. That brings us to action item, item B, a March Budget Review, page seven of your packet. Finance Director Solis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just one moment while I pull up my notes. There we go. Okay, so March, we're reviewing March today. It was in the packet but not in the agenda last week, so I'm presenting it tonight. Might feel a bit delayed. It usually takes us a week to two weeks to fully close the month, so the month of April will be presented later this month, but we are presenting the review for March 2022 this evening. The City of Saco ended March in a strong financial position, happy to report. Unassigned fund balance was at 33.78% of adopted budget. Expenses were tracking 9% behind forecast, while revenues were tracking precisely on target. As second-half tax bills have been received, the unassigned fund balance is likely to drop through the rest of the year as expenses continue to roll in. Expenses were tracking 9% behind in March largely because TIF transfers were not booked. Finance has worked with assessing over the last couple of weeks to fully reconcile the transfer amounts per TIF and CEA agreements, and those transfers are now complete and will be part of the April Budget Review. We have also issued CEA payments to qualified developers. Capital code enforcement, county tax, finance, fire and ambulance, insurance, planning, police, school, solicitor, and supported entities were all on target because they were within 5% of the total forecast year-to-date. The others I will detail now. The assessing department is tracking 44% behind forecast. The department will not be moving forward with a budgeted revaluation in FY 2022. City administration is 11% behind forecast. The department had not yet filled the Harbor Master position when this update was written, although that position has since been filled. Dues and memberships are running a bit light year-to-date as well. Software, the city has moved away from using Zoom for digital meetings, and so that software line will be light through the end of the year. City clerk, 36% behind forecast. Once again, general assistance is just running light, has been all year. Seasonal wages, which are related really to election, election clerks and our partners who run the elections, that's also running light. There is one more election before the close of the fiscal year, but without a big national election, the volume just isn't, wasn't there. Communications is 7% behind forecast. Equipment fees, supplies, travel and training, all running a bit light. There is an RFP for citizen engagement, and in fact, I believe the RFP has closed and they're reviewing the submissions. And the first couple of payments on the AVI equipment have been made. The director has a plan to fully expend this budget by the end of the year. Contingency is running 7% behind forecast. The city does have $45,000 total remaining in its contingency account for unplanned expenses and shared initiatives with the city of Bitterford. Fringe benefits is running 7% ahead of forecast. The MMA Workers Comp Quarterly Bill for April was paid early in March, that's what's driving that. Grant projects, $1,6,654 in grant and reimbursed expenses have been booked to date. Human Resources is 20% behind forecast. Department was understaffed for the first part of the year, we've talked about this a few times. There are several new training initiatives that will ensure the training line is expended by the end of the year. Information Technology is 9% behind forecast, and the department is working on a plan to spend those funds. Parks and Recreation, 14% behind forecast. The department spent less than budgeted during last summer's lighter programming schedule. Public Works is 13% behind forecast. On waste collection, the city is forecasted to enjoy about $100,000 in savings due to a credit on our account from overbilling in the previous year, as well as just in general lower-than-forecasted tipping, tipping fees on our recycling. Capital equipment purchases are running light year-to-date. Public Works is looking at how to utilize the year-one savings on the CMP lease, potentially to expand the project scope of the LED conversion or cover unplanned cost increases. And then base pay is a little light in that department, again, due to turnover. TIF transfers, this wasn't complete as of the end of March, but we have since booked those transfers and issued CEA payments to our partners. Are there any questions on the expense side? On revenues, like I said, revenues are exactly on target. Rentals, communications, finance, fire and ambulance, public works, and real and personal property taxes are all on track because they are within 5% of forecasted amounts. City clerk revenue, 54% behind forecast. Again, this is because general assistance submissions to the state have been light. The loss in revenue is offset by lower expenses. Code enforcement fees, still 29% behind forecast. Development activity has slowed. As I've mentioned previously, there's a couple of big commercial development projects that could boost this line. Grants and reimbursements, the city has received $89,865 to date from other entities for specific programs. Interest earnings is 40% behind forecast. Even with a lighter forecast, interest earnings have continued to be meager. The Finance Department is going to push forward with an investment RFP in May to try and get some more activity on this line. I am hearing about some interest earning opportunities in CDs, which have pushed up with some of the action taken by the Federal Reserve. Parks and Recreation fees are 12% behind forecast. This revenue line item is picking up, so in previous presentations, this line was a little bit lighter, and it looks like we are picking up. Summer registrations are starting to come in, and there's going to be a full programming schedule, which is really exciting for that department and for everyone in the city. Revenues, in fact, are only $80,000 behind versus expenses, which are $205,000 behind. So Recreation looks like it's going to be a net positive for the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. Planning is 10% ahead of forecast. There was an accounting adjustment that brought revenues down, but they are still performing ahead of forecast. Police revenues, 68% behind forecast. Just revenues coming in light across all lines. Outside assignments have been light. Thornton Academy decided to stop funding the SRO with the Police Department. That was the biggest driver. We have taken that out of budgeted revenues for 2023. State assistance is 32% ahead of forecast. It is on track to come in $1 million above forecast, which is great. This will help offset the budget use of fund balance, which is currently at 1.6 million. And based on some analysis I did for the budget book, our unassigned fund balance is likely to remain flat for next year, so that's good news all around. Unallocated, there was $19,883 in found revenues due to miscellaneous receipts and accounting adjustments and our use of fund balances. Mentioned previously, we did budget 1.6 million to balance the budget, but of course, no revenues flow into that line. Are there any questions on the budget update? Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to item C, a public hearing, adoption of the fiscal year 2023 municipal budget. That is page 11 in the packet, assigned to Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 28th, 2022, the city administrator presented a recommended fiscal year 2023 budget. The school board voted on their budget on April 13th and was subsequently moved forward to the council for consideration. Council met with departments and agencies to review and discuss budgets in workshop in April. I move to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 city budget and the fiscal year 2023 budget for the Water Resource Recovery Department.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote to open the public hearing. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to open the public hearing at 6:56 PM. Public hearing is now open. If there's anyone who would like to speak on the municipal budget, please come forward and be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm David Plavon, 2 Surf Street in Saco. I'm here to ask you to support the amendment for $170,000 from ARPA funds to fund and host county dredge. This isn't really about the jetty anymore. We're now facing sea level rise, warming water, more frequent and powerful storms. We need to, we need to take advantage and do something. Our county commissioner, Al Seacard, at a county commission meeting called this a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We need your support to make this happen and make it known to everyone that we're serious about doing something to protect our natural resource. We need to put some tools in our tool shed to defend it, and this is an outs, you know, this is, again, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I urge you to approve it and just be reminded that the most expensive option is the cost of doing nothing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public?
Hi, Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road, president along with our vice president, David Plavon of SOA Saco Bay. Thank you for considering the amendment for $170,000 on the dredge equipment. You have a write-up on the dredge justification, including the benefits to our citizens, tourists, the environment, for a healthy beach. I just would like to address the long-term cost benefits as well that can tie in to the Army Corps project coming before you soon. The city could be on the hook for some upfront costs, but certainly would be responsible for years in the future sand replenishments unless we can get it from our federal government. Having access to a dredge can save the city hundreds of thousands on future sand replenishments. Having access to a dredge can be a huge negotiating tool in the current Army Corps negotiations. Having access to a dredge can be short-term critical in case an agreement can't be reached. And I do want to highlight the future savings on our public works budget. We have talked about how they spend roughly 250K down there, keeping the roads open, shoreline safe. But in future needed sand replenishments, we also have, we also save environmentally by using fuel and hydraulics just in the, for the dredge and not truck after truck, driving sands on our roads, coming through all our roadways for a massive sand replenishment. Delivering, hauling, moving, digging sand. Now, it doesn't guarantee the sand does come from the water, but, but, I mean, just the opportunity alone on that is justification. And a dredge does stay in the water, stays in the water where it should be, just like plows stay on the, on the roads. Dredges stay in the water. David and I are available for questions in your new business item later this evening. And again, thank you, thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak during the public hearing of the adoption of the municipal budget? Seeing nobody seeking recognition, Counselor McPhail.
Thank you. I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council set the vote on the fiscal year 2023 city budget and the fiscal year 2023 budget for the Water Resource Recovery Department for May 9th, 2022.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 7:01 PM. That brings us to item D, a public hearing, adoption of the fiscal year 2023-2027 Capital Program, page 12 in your packet. And that is Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 28th, 2022, the city administrator presented a recommended fiscal year 2023 budget, which included as section three of the overall budget, the five-year capital program. The council discussed the capital program as part of the April 25th workshop. I move to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 through fiscal year 2027 capital program.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Johnston to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 7:02 PM. Those folks wishing to speak on the 2023-2027 Capital Program, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody coming forward for recognition, Counselor McPhail.
Thank you. I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council set the vote on the fiscal year 2023 through fiscal year 2027 capital program for May 9th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Johnston to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call vote to close the public hearing and set final reading from May 9th. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 7:03. That brings us to item E, a first reading, Chapter 186, Addressing Standards, this page 13 in your packet, and that is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. City of Saco assigns residential and commercial addresses to structures in the city where it is responsibility of the city to protect the lives and property of the residents. It is desire of the city to operate efficient and effective public safety services where these efficient and effective public safety operations are inhibited by the current inconsistent street numbering process. The update, the updated ordinance will give clear guidance on addressing, renaming, and/or readdressing of streets, as there are a number of duplicate road names and addresses across the city which have life, safety impacts. Staff recommends approval. Be it ordered that the city council approve the first reading of Chapter 186, Addressing Standards, and set a public hearing date for May 16th, 2022.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item E, a final reading, Budget Amendment Number Seven, a second and final reading, Budget Amendment Number Seven, Purchase of Police Cruisers, page 22 in your packet. And that is assigned to Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Police Department has identified a critical shortage of vehicles due to supply chain issues. A dealer has notified us that the Ford Explorers will be available for purchase in May, but that future orders could be delayed, delayed as long as 24 months. Therefore, we are recommending that the cruisers be purchased as a one-time use of fund balance in fiscal year 2022, and that an offsetting amendment be approved by council for fiscal year 2023 to zero out the cruiser line as a one-time adjustment. Be it ordered that the council approve the second and final reading of Budget Amendment Number Seven. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. That concludes the action items for this evening. Brings us to Item 10, new business. There'll be no votes, but this is kind of the lineup of how you'll see it in next week's May 9th council meeting. But we'll now go through these individually and hear any issues or possible amendments. So, Item A is adoption of the fee schedule for the fiscal year 2023, page 24 in your packet. Finance Director Salas, do you have any additions to add or any updates from the last time this was presented?
No changes.
Thank you. Counsel, have you had a chance to review the fee schedule? And if so, are there any amendments at this time, potential amendments? And also, I'll take a counselor that's willing to volunteer to put their name on to be the resource for setting the fees. Council Archer, thank you. Okay, seeing no further discussion on this item, brings us to Item B, adoption of the fiscal year 2023 Water Resource Recovery Division budget, page 25 in your packet. Any questions on the adoption of the WRD budget? If so, the director is here to answer any questions. Any possible amendments? Council Archer?
I have a question, only because it's a significant increase in one year. Are there any resources we have that can help offset the 20% increase, maybe using, again, I don't know, use TIF, use something else that we possibly have to help offset this 20%? I knew it was coming, so don't get me wrong. I'm just trying to see if there's any solutions to possibly offset it, not 100%, like not the full 20%, but even like a 10 and 10, or you know where I'm going with this.
Well, the 15% was for the bond. The last 5% really what got us is BioSol's disposal and the PFAS legislation. So, with the technically banned any compost in the state, and we have required to go to landfill, or we've also looked at options of maybe going into Canada, that by far is our biggest hit.
Yeah.
Electricity is up, chemicals are up, I think 100%. So, that's really where it's all coming from, Counselor.
Because when I was looking at, like, the expenses, the line item expenses, we can't move any of our funds that we currently have, TIF or anything that can be connected to the bond. I just don't want to have a 20% increase all at once, if you know what I'm trying to say. I get that these are the expenses, I get it.
Right.
But is there a solution to offset?
Well, I think on the bond, we've certainly looked at TIS, and we're looking at paying $800,000 a year for the next 27 years, I think, to abate that. But the way the finance director and the city administrator, we'd worked it out to try to keep it down, was going to be 15, 15, and 7. Are you suggesting we drop down from 15 and extend that out?
That's the thing. I'd want more research and more knowledge provided, because again, I don't want it to then cost us more in the future, if you know what I'm trying to say.
I don't understand what you mean by that.
Moving the money around, all of a sudden, then we're paying a lot on the back end rather than the front end?
Well, I think where we're putting the 15 up, we're now putting it into a sinking fund, so when we can start paying down as it comes. To me personally, I think that's the best way to do it. I could certainly have Glennis O'Brien speak to that. But remember, we're still going to have, even after all those increases, we're still going to be lower than the average in the state of Maine. I get that. If you have some suggestions, we're rolling.
Nope, that's actually what this question was for, is to find out, is there another solution? If the answer is there's no other solution, that is the answer. But I figured I'd ask.
I mean, like Howard had, or Director Carter referenced, it was a 15 plus 15 plus 7. So, we could take, you know, five points off the front and put them on the back. We've had conversations about what the debt issuance is going to look like. We're planning to use the Clean Water SRF. They'll probably issue one half of the debt in year one, one half of the debt in year two. So, the likelihood is that we're not going to have a full principal payment even in fiscal year 2023, right? This 450,000 is going to a sinking fund in preparation for the first step payment. Even that first step payment is going to be half of what we're anticipating. So, you could take five points off of this year and put it on the back, just to kind of level up the increases, if that's something you'd like to look at.
Thank you.
Director Carter, just, we are still searching, as we indicated before, we are still searching for federal dollars and grant programs and so forth.
Yeah.
I know my signature keeps getting put on a bunch of letters for you.
So, so far, we've got 3.9 through Senator King and Collins. We just got awarded 1 million from the Clean Water SRF. We recently submitted 3.4, I might be off a little bit on the numbers, to Senator King this year, and also 3.9 for another project to Representative Pingery. So, we are very actively turning over every rock we can find. Unfortunately, the construction costs keep going up, so we're just trying here to even balance at the best we can. So, I think City Administrator Canerith indicated there might be some more money coming up that I'm unaware of, that maybe we can qualify for. So, yeah, every day we're looking, believe me.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further, Councilor Johnston?
Just a clarifying question. These bond funds aren't expended until a project is actually built correct, or are we paying ahead of time?
Well, yeah, there's a number of ways they can be structured, and we're going to meet with the bond bank and the state. We can just pay on what we've drawn out and then refinance it all at the end, or we can all refinance it in the beginning and try to stay at that 1% interest rate, because we're going to play the interest rate game here pretty quick. But yeah, we can pay them a little upfront and then refinance for the whole thing at the end. But we would be paying something in year one, or year two, but it would be a smaller amount, leading to what Council Archer was getting to, I guess.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions on this item? Is there a council resource? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Director Carter. That brings us to Item C, which is adoption of the whole municipal budget. Is there any council resource for Item C? Counselor Gunn, thank you. And obviously, we know that the municipal budget will be amended through several amendments that have already been put forward. So, Item, Council Amendment Number One is BSAB, Bedford Saco Old Orchard Beach Funding, page 29 in your packet. And again, that's increasing to fully fund BSAB at $250,000 through the use of TIF revenues. Any questions on this? Seeing no questions is our council liaison, I would guess Counselor Hatch, since you are the liaison to the BSAB board. That fits nicely. Item Two is Council Amendment Number Two, a county dredge initiative, page 30 in your packet. And that is Counselor Berman. Any discussion on the council, Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've seen a couple of presentations on this, and the packet is pretty thorough. I do just want to explain for the counselors or the public who haven't been following along, there was initially a discussion for a higher number value that was reflecting some uncertainty around what it would cost to operate the dredge for the first year. It will come in the middle of our fiscal year, which is part of the savings. It's also unlikely that all the permits will be in place to fully operate the dredge in its first year. So, really, what the city is being asked to do is fund the construction, the setup, the training for the dredge, and then also hire an executive director who will eventually be in charge of scheduling and operating the dredge. And it's the job of that executive director to also start creating the schedule and contracts for the shared dredge going forward that will help ensure its financial independence in the future. And so, part of what we're doing is getting that person in place, who can then start putting the schedule in for future years, ensuring that it is indeed not Saco that's being asked to fund the dredge in the future. In addition, and just to reiterate some of the things you've already heard, there's really two needs for this dredge. And one is to immediately combat the effects of climate change and to move sand around where it needs to be moved around in order to protect Camp Ellis, the jetty, and really all of our beaches at this point. But the second reason for the dredge is it's part of an integrative plan that involves a breakwater or a living shoreline solution. Regardless of how we try to address the Camp Ellis erosion over time, all of those solutions require sand replenishment. The sand needs to come from somewhere. It's not coming from the river because of the jetty. And so, this dredge is our attempt at a solution to that. It's the most efficient, effective, and cost-effective way for the city to do that. It's likely to save hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars over the long term and provide really necessary protection for a beachfront, which, as we all know, is a driver of our community and economy. So, I just wanted to clarify those issues in case anybody was wondering.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Any further discussion on the dredge initiative? Okay, and that is assigned to Counsel Berman. That brings us to Item Three, a council amendment number three for age-friendly Saco, page 36 in your packet, also assigned to Counselor Berman at his request. Any discussion on the age-friendly Saco council amendment number three, increase account item 10620-50717, age-friendly Saco by $56,500. Counselor Berman?
I think we're going to need some council discussion on this because it overlaps with council amendment number four. It changes both the amount of funding and the source of funding. My concerns in putting this into a general account and not the ARPA funding was twofold. One, there's a lot of pressure on the ARPA funding, and I wanted to protect that for other necessary needs. And two, well, the intent is that this is a temporary position. It's to provide a transit coordinator until the BSOB can take over those services. This would allow it to continue for a second or third year, if needed, until another agency can take over those services without having to reassign the funds from somewhere else or amending the budget again. So, that was my intent, but I don't think we need both council amendment three and council amendment four. We should choose one or the other.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Just as Counselor Berman indicated, council amendment number four does not have a council resource. It was a budget proposal that I put in and discussed last week. If there is a counselor who is willing to be the council resource, then I think it would warrant further discussion. If there's no counselor wishing to be that resource, there's no real need to discuss it because I can't make motions. Counselor McPhail will be the council resource on that item. So, again, council amendment number three and number four kind of tie together for age-friendly. And as I indicated last week, the reason putting that forward is to also purchase a van that will stay with the city and help assist the Saco Parks and Rec Department in the usage of this program, but also down the road to make sure there's redundancy in vehicle use. So, discussion? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. So, that being said, are we inclined to adjust budget amendment three down to a level that provides $2,500, that gets the full request to 10, and then use budget amendment four to cover the cost of the position as well as the purchase of the van? Is that what we're contemplating here?
That's one possibility, Counselor Hatch. However, if you look in the council amendment number four, there is a third bullet point that says the remainder of those funds be available for age-friendly to obtain additional grants in operation. So, I imagine there would be some leftover money unless the council amends the motion to reduce the amount from 125 down. Then there would be some additional revenue to age-friendly, no doubt an organization that does far more with the $7,500 that they're given every year.
I would certainly attest to that. So, then, we would effectively, if I'm understanding the conversation here correctly, we would eliminate the proposed budget amendment three and replace it with budget amendment four, which would be expanded to acquire a new van for Parks and Rec to be used in the transportation program, senior coordinator for age-friendly, and then any residual funds from whatever we agree to will fall to age-friendly. So, that's clear.
That is the intent of the use of the ARPA money for the transportation services. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, I guess two questions about that. They're really kind of both center around the van portion, which I guess is the main difference between the two amendments. My understanding of the age-friendly program was that it largely relied upon volunteers using their own vehicles. And so, I guess I'm wondering about the need for the van. I haven't heard that spoken to. And then, relatedly, once the program moves over to Bedford Saco, OB Transit, or wherever it ends up, I'm wondering about the need of Saco Parks and Rec and the ability of them to use the van effectively. I've also not heard Director Sommer or others from Saco Parks and Rec speak to their need for a van. So, I'm wondering about those two pieces. I don't know if, I mean, I'd see Gene and Director Sommer are here. I don't know if we can get feedback right now.
I know in initial discussions with Director Sommer, he indicated that this program might be something that the city wants to retain if it works well, and having two vans as opposed to one in case one breaks down. And with, as we heard with police cruisers, vehicles are hard to find these days, so having an additional van on hand when something breaks is having the foresight to do something now with federal dollars versus later coming out of the general fund. But Executive Director Saunders, welcome.
Thank you. I'll just clarify that for this year, we have two AmeriCorps members. So, one of them actually uses the van in order to provide rides. So, we currently schedule with Saco Parks and Rec to use the van. So, we coordinate with Amelia when the van is available, when it's not available. And then, we also do have volunteer drivers because we quickly were above capacity in our ability to have one person meet all the demands. The rides continue to increase every single week as time goes on and people become aware of this program. So, I anticipate that we will probably continue to use the van, you know, as well as our volunteer drivers.
Counselor Hatch?
And I just wanted to add a footnote to the discussion about Bedford Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit assuming this task, and that is not a done deal. I am liaison to BSUB as well, so I don't want anybody to think that that's a done deal. It's being negotiated as we speak. It's on the radar screen. There seems to be some level of receptivity to doing that, but there is no commitment to do so because there are many other priorities that are being dealt with at the moment on that side of the ledger. So, if, in fact, we were able to migrate to that model, then I think it's reasonable for the city to assume that we would only then be funding one-third of the cost because it's a tri-community, three-party, one-third, one-third, one-third funding mechanism. So, it's possible that if it does get absorbed by BSUB, that there actually could be a cost savings to the city. So, you know, I think we play it out selfishly. If it's a program that we can sustain ourselves because we have the demand from Saco citizens, I think it's going to be something worth looking at. So, we have, we're just trying to bridge a gap here.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right. And we continue to have conversations with Chad about microtransit, what that looks like. That often includes, you know, on-demand as well. So, but I totally agree. You know, it's not a guarantee that a year from now, but we're going to try and continue to fulfill the need, you know, until we have a better option.
Any, Counselor Berman?
Yeah, just to note, and this is really about the amendments and the source of funds. Council got an email from Director Salas this afternoon that if we fund all of the amendments for the use of ARPA funds, that's a little over 390,000, where we amendments for the use of ARPA funds, that's a little over 390,000, where we only have a little over 350,000 available, that that's 40,000 more that we're trying to spend than we have. So another route forward would be to keep amendment three and modify amendment four to not cover the salary and have that come out of the general fund. And that would allow us to fund all of the requests, including the van, without exceeding our use of ARPA funds.
Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is more about the van. Is, we were just identified, informed of the AmeriCorps using it, which that I agree because AmeriCorps, there's a collaboration with the city. However, with AmeriCorps ending in September, do we allow volunteers to use city vehicles? And I get the AmeriCorps, but AmeriCorps is ending, which is why we have this need. So who would be driving the second van if we don't have eligible drivers, I guess is the best way to say it?
Age-friendly and the City of Saco would be working together to iron out those operational details.
Say again, sorry?
Age-friendly Saco and the City of Saco and the Parks and Rec Department would be working together to iron out those operational details of who can drive and through the, you know, through the insurance company, who is legally okay to drive with the city, just like they did with the AmeriCorps grant program that Director Saunders and Age-friendly got.
Well, in AmeriCorps, I believe that's a, but the volunteers.
The volunteers would not be able to drive.
So then we have a van that very, no AmeriCorps person will exist, so they won't be driving it. This is where I get confused.
Sure. Yeah, no, it's completely understandable. So AmeriCorps has been funded, we just learned, for another year. So I'm hopeful that we will apply again, obviously not guaranteed, but we would apply again to try and have an AmeriCorps member also be a driver for the upcoming year.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Council Archer?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
And Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, my question surrounds this van, too. I guess from my perspective, if we're adding to the overall fleet of the city, if this van is needed long-term, it would make more sense to me to do our normal route of lease purchases and not use ARPA funds for something such as this. But that's just my thought on this. Thank you.
Any further discussion on these amendments?
Yes, just to get some clarification on next steps. What I heard is potentially amending down number four just to reflect the capital purchase of the van, potentially having a five-year lease out of the operating budget for the van. So is there a counselor who wants to amend amendment number four? Or I could draft like a third alternative for Monday?
The council may have to email you with their, kind of their thoughts for next week.
So as the next step, if any counselors have a specific change or alternative amendment they would like to see for budget approval night, please email me, and I'll be happy to draft that and then distribute it to the council as a whole. I did want to follow up on the question of insurance. If the city owns the vehicle, it is held under a liability insurance, and the city is liable for whatever happens in a city vehicle. In general, the city policy is that city employees only drive the vehicle. So that would be a consideration for the council if the anticipation is that the new employee of Age-friendly Saco will be driving the vehicle, or Age-friendly Saco initiatives potentially, there should be consideration that the vehicle and liability insurance is carried by Age-friendly Saco. That's something that I would look to consider when we get closer to budget approval and something I would like, you know, I would offer to councils' consideration in how this amendment is structured.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas. Just for clarity, council amendment number four now being offered by Councilor McFail. Again, it says in bullet point number three, salary coverage for the senior coordinator, it does not give $60,000 to Age-friendly Saco. However, it could be put into Parks and Rec Department line item and still be covered through ARPA money, which, again, doesn't affect the mill rate versus if you go with the general fund, which can have effects on the mill rate. So just again, as we look through this, it doesn't have to go through Age-friendly Saco, and therefore, the city could use that $60,000 to hire one, if not two, senior volunteer coordinators at a part-time status to continue the good work that's going on today. So just for consideration and thoughts, but again, as always, please get your amendments to Finance Director Salas as soon as possible so that she can work to draft those for you. Any further discussion on amendment number three or amendment number four? Seeing no further discussion on amendment number three or amendment number four, brings us to council amendment number five, police cruisers, page 38 in your packet. Is there, Finance Director Salas, is this to amend next year's budget as we just approved the police cruiser purchase in this year's budget?
Yes, that's exactly correct. This is that offsetting amendment to reduce use of fund balance in 2023.
Thank you. Sarah, Councilor, Councilor McFail, thank you. Any discussion on amendment number five, again, page 38, to reduce the amount in that line item because you already approved the purchase today in this fiscal year budget for police cruisers? Seeing no discussion, moving on to page 39 in your packet, council amendment number six, I believe, and that was hybrid meetings. And that was put in by Councilor Johnston to put forward amendment to funds required investment to run hybrid meetings in the council chambers and first-floor conference room, and the ARPA expenditures are 20,562 to fund the hybrid meetings. Any discussion on this item?
We have two different, I'm sorry, we have two different numbers. Which one are we looking at? So in the packet, it's 17632 in the paper form, 25, 20,562.
It's the second, the most updated. That includes...
This is the most updated?
The one we received tonight that Executive Assistant Gorman passed out and left at all the council desks for $20,562.
Perfect.
The increase includes equipping the downstairs conference room.
Any discussion on this item? Councilor Berman and Councilor Hatch, Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I support the hybrid meetings and the use of ARPA funds for it, so that's not my question. I'm grateful the amendment was put in. Are there also those staffing costs that would go along with the equipment once it's purchased in order to run the hybrid meeting? And is the IT department or communications or whoever set up to do that? Or do we need other amendments to allow that?
Let's hear from Communications Director and Human Resource Director Emily Roy.
So that would depend on the number of meetings that ended up being, utilizing that equipment. So one goal would be training staff liaisons to be able to run the equipment independently. If it's something that requires the cable cast, like a council meeting, then communications would staff that. So as it stands right now, we are, we've selected a great candidate for that part-time position. As long as we don't add any additional meetings, we can cover the existing meetings. Anything additional, then we would need to revisit.
Any further, Councilor Hatch and then Councilor McFail, Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Councilor Berman asked the same question, so we're thinking alike.
Councilor McFail?
Thank you. Emily, is this accounting for, what is going to be the year-to-year cost? Is there a maintenance fee to continue this from year to year as well?
There is. I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but in the information that was sent over, Glenn, I don't know if you have it. It had the annual cost, so it had the one-time expenditures and the recurring costs. There will be a recurring cost associated with this, so...
So this is the one-time startup, first year?
And it includes some of the recurring costs, but we can send that, oh, do you have them handy?
Yes, I'll send this out to the full council. I did roll over just for year one, basically, the whole cost into ARPA to keep the amendment simple, but the annualized recurring cost is $5,100 in software.
And could that be absorbed by the communications budget?
We'd need to add to it long-term. But if it's in the ARPA funds for year one, then we just plan to add it for next year's budget.
Any further discussion on hybrid meetings, council amendment number six? Seeing no, nothing further on that, brings us to council amendment number seven, a bypass road from Smith Lane to Stockman Avenue, and this was put in by Councilor Johnston. Councilor Johnston, you want to say anything on this item?
Well, I think given, you know, that we, or I should speak for myself, I know myself in particular, the support of that most recent contract zone was the uniqueness was that they were able to give us by deed the rights we needed to hopefully build out a road that's been talked about for at least 15 years. So my thinking with this was instead of waiting another 15 years, let's move as, you know, expeditiously as possible. And again, given that we have these ARPA funds, it seems like an appropriate use, one that in future years, we might not have this money available, so that was my thinking.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the use of 75,000 in ARPA funds to fund the study of a bypass road from Smith Lane to Stockman Avenue? I'm guessing it's a study because I don't believe $75,000 is going to build the road, but...
We wish. Yeah, it's essentially, the way I presented it to Director Fox was similar to how we've explored the sidewalk for the ferry road to do that initial legwork.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion. Council amendment number eight for traffic and pedestrian safety, put in by Councilor Johnston. Councilor Johnston, anything you want to say on this item?
Yeah, so, I mean, for years, we've, you know, at traffic safety, we end up expending costs when, you know, we have requests such as those traffic signal beacons, the crossing beacons, and it's really never been a dedicated fund. Director Fox had just kind of found the money in his budget, and so there really is no impact to this budget. It's just putting it into an appropriate line. It's been talked about for several years, and I just view this as an opportunity to finally, for the, really, the interest of the transparency and overall budgeting, it's easier to have a dedicated line.
Thank you. Councilor Hatch?
I would just like to be supportive of this amendment, also serving on the Traffic Safety Committee. Council Johnson has expressed it very clearly. It would be a real benefit to the process to have this lined up and give Director Fox an opportunity to not have to search for money for us when we need it. So I'm very much in support of that amendment.
Any further discussion on this amendment, which is to decrease account number 10482 to 50347 by 10,000 and increase account 10681 to 50952 to traffic and pedestrian safety annual amount of $10,000? Seeing no further discussion on this item, moving on. I thought there was another one. I don't seem to have another one.
I think that's it, yeah.
Okay. Those are, those are the current amendments. Again, if you have any further amendments, please get them into Finance Director Salas so she can prepare them for the next meeting. That brings us to item D, adoption of the, excuse me, fiscal year 2023 to 2027 capital program, page 41 in the packet. Is there a counselor that'd like to be the resource on this? Jody? Councilor McFail? Okay.
So this is changing what we adopted, voting...
This is just breaking it out into two separate motions and making sure that it's clear what adopting it.
Okay.
Item E, council resolution approving the school budget fiscal year 2022, 2023, page 42 in the packet. Any questions on the school budget, resolution to approve the school budget? Any changes? Counselor, Counselor would like to be the resource? Councilor Berman? Moving on to item E1, which was an amendment to the school budget, page 44 in your packet, and that, there's no number on that? Finance Director Salas, was there an amendment put forward?
No, that's just a draft amendment, so if any counselor does want to amend the school budget, this is sort of the format that it would look like.
Fair enough. That brings us to E2, which is council resolutions approving the additional local funds for the school budget for fiscal year 2023, 2020, excuse me, 2022, 2023, page 45 in your packet. Is there a counselor that'd like to be the resource on this? Councilor Johnston, thank you. Any questions on this item? Seeing no questions, brings us to item E3, is a council resolution approving adult education budget fiscal year 2022, 2023, page 46. Any discussion on these, excuse me, the adult education budget? Seeing no discussion, is there a counselor that'd like to be the resource on this item? Council Archer, thank you. And item F, set the fiscal year 2023 property tax due dates and interest rates, page 47 in your packet. Any questions on this item? Is there a counselor who would like to be the resource on setting the fiscal year 2023 property tax due dates? Councilor Gunn, thank you. Item G is to reconfirm the authority to apply tax payments to the oldest outstanding tax, page 49 in your packet. Any questions on the tax collecting policy? Any discussions? Is there a counselor resource who would like to be on this? Councilor Hatch, thank you. And item H, acceptance of the ARPA money. That one's an important one. All right. Thank you, Council Archer. That is page 50 in your packet. Any questions on accepting the ARPA money? Okay. That takes us through all the known amendments at this time. Again, please, Councilor McFail?
Quick question. With the ARPA funds now, if, with all of the amendments as they stand, if they go through and we are over, if they all get approved, let's say, and we're still over, how do we then go back to adjust the, what is it, 40,000 difference?
So as you look through your budget book, you can make amendments to move some of the ARPA money that's been kind of allocated in the city administrator's budget to other revenue sources such as TIF revenues, or you can reduce the amount of money that's being used to, out of the ARPA money. Or again, transition other things to general fund. But the big thing with the general fund is, as we all know, it increases the mill rate. So, Council Archer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a question. If that happens, hopefully it doesn't, that's, will we, because the way the motions are written is to say taking out of ARPA, will we have to change the motion?
written is to say taking out of ARPA, will we have to change the motion?
At some point if you...
Like the title name, or whatever we're going to call it, or we're going to have to say to take money out of ARPA in general fund, or ARPA in whatever fund?
At some point, as you work through the budget amendments, I imagine the finance director is going to notify us that we've allocated all of our ARPA money and there's nothing left, so you will then have to adjust any further amendments that you have, or make some additional amendments to get under the ARPA, or put it into a different designation.
Yeah, thank you.
Finance Director Salas, am I on point there?
Yes, you are. At the mayor's request, I'll put up the mil rate calculator, which we've used the last couple of years, and it goes red when you spend all of the ARPA money, so you'll know, and then we'll have to work together to come up with some amendments.
Any further questions on that? Okay, that brings us to Item 11, the administrative updates. City Administrator Canrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, an update on Camp Ellis and the Army Corps project. So last week, we had a Zoom meeting with the Army Corps, and did receive some preliminary revised cost estimates for the Jedice Pro Project. It's amazing what 10 years and some inflation in construction costs will do, because it's now estimated at $41.6 million for the project. There's also a potential cost share with the non-federal sponsor, that's us, that will be required. That exact percentage is still being determined, based on a whole number of things going back over the last 100 years. Our congressional delegation will be working with us to keep any potential non-federal cost share down to the absolute minimum. I spoke with Senator Collins' office today, and they reiterated their support in trying to push that number down as much as possible. The other piece that was really put before us, again, is the city will be required to submit yet another letter of support to the revised cost estimates before going forward with a potential PPA. So that was overall not a lot of great news, but we do at least have some numbers in front of us. And some more positive news, I just said I spoke with Senator Collins' office today, and this is some pretty good news. So Senator Collins has been successful in adding language to the word of bill, which is the Water Resources Development Act legislation, that will authorize up to $45 million now for the project. So that would cover, obviously, the $41.6. So I'd like to thank Alex Pelzar in Senator Collins' office for her continued tireless work and advocacy on this project, she's been great with us, as well as the rest of our delegation, but we just received that news today. The bill is in committee markup this week, so we'll have final details to come. So some not-so-great news, but some good news also, so I think things are still alive, and we're just waiting for some final, those preliminary cost estimates to become finalized, then we can talk about if the city wants to do a letter supporting that, and then finally move on to that project, that very elusive project partnership agreement at some point. So that's the latest from there, but we'll hopefully have more soon. Next, just another general reminder, June 14th, primary election coming up, absentee ballots available May 13th, and the last day to request or vote in person absentee will be Thursday, June 9th. I'd like to thank everyone who came to a very well-attended session of city administrators' open office hours this past week, thank you to all for coming and sharing their thoughts and concerns. Next session will be May 31st from 3:35 here on the Second floor of City Hall. And lastly, a reminder from the Finance Department that the Finance Department will be issuing final notices to patients with outstanding ambulance balances in mid-May. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Canrath. Any questions for the city administrator? Seeing no questions, moving on to Item 12, Council Discussion and Comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I have a little bit of a rant. I was able to attend the first part of the Planning Board meeting last week on April 26th, and I spoke with several of the Planning Board members after. Frankly, I was pretty shocked at the lack of decorum, decency, and professionalism on display by some of the members of the audience. As President Teddy Roosevelt reminded us, it's much easier to be the critic on the sideline, judging and belittling the man or woman in the arena, who's the one who's actually getting dirty and doing the work. And those critics add little to the eventual success of the work. To be clear, it's my opinion that we should all be rooting for the Planning Board's wisdom and success. When they do their job well, we all win. The Planning Board members are hardworking, intelligent, and dedicated volunteers who give up an enormous amount of time, energy, and personal privacy to help Saco. I'd like to thank them. I'd also like to remind the public that the city has hired professional staff to guide all of our boards and committees, including this council. Recognizing that all humans are fallible, it nevertheless behooves us to trust and respect the judgment of these professionals. If we truly believe that armchair critics know more than the professionals that we've hired, it would be time to hire new professionals. Indeed, our Planning Board is advised by well-trained and professional city planner and staff. They have both experience and expertise in planning and land use law and procedures. I have faith in their judgment, and hope that the Planning Board and the rest of this council does also. I believe that public advocacy and engagement are not only welcome, but are essential to the proper functioning of our government. But when that discourse shifts from offering that needed assistance and perspective into attempts at undermining and public humiliation, we've then crossed a line into bullying that has no place in the public sphere. To lecture, for example, to lecture the board on the importance of following procedure, or refusing to adhere to the procedures regarding both time limits and topics for public sessions is not appropriate. Moreover, and perhaps most startlingly, I witnessed a former member of the Planning Board come with what was clearly a pre-prepared statement, calling out two members of the board for failure to follow best procedure after an absence at a prior meeting. I found this shocking for several reasons. First, I've never seen a former board member come before a board and critique the performance of professionalism of current board members. In addition, I'm unaware of anyone on any city board, including this council, following the guidelines as they were presented. If it is indeed best practice, it is not common practice here in Saco. But more importantly, the goal should be the proper functioning of the board, and ensuring public confidence in their deliberations, and if so, a private note, offering advice to the members about the proper steps to take, or a note to the chairperson informing them, would have allowed those practices to be followed without publicly drawing into question the integrity of the board or individual board members. If there was time to research and prepare a statement in advance, there certainly was time to email the members. To wait until the opportunity was missed, and then call those members out for missing them, is shameful and disingenuous. This kind of public calling-out behavior has become increasingly common at council and Planning Board meetings, and it really draws into question the motivation of speakers. Undermining public confidence in our boards and their members does not serve those boards or the city. It only benefits self-interest and political point scoring, and comes at the expense of a well-functioning and trusted board or council. One cannot, in good faith, both claim to respect and value the Planning Board and seek to undermine it simultaneously. There is a better way to do collaborative governance. My hope is we can stop these political hits, and start working together to build up and empower our board members, and create processes and outcomes that will serve Saco for many decades going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council discussion and comment? Okay, moving on. Item 13, Executive Session, is there a motion to enter Executive Session? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. We had ordered that the city council enter into Executive Session pursuant to MRSAA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, A, Compensation of Employees, and D, City Administrator's Contract Negotiation.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman, any discussion? Discussion, roll call, vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to enter Executive Session at 7:55.
Okay, welcome back from executive session. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilor Berman, any discussion? Council of Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Council of McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to exit executive session at eight forty five PM. Item fourteen, report from executive session. There is no report this evening. Brings us to item fifteen. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Councilor Hatch, any discussion? Or, excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council of Purdy, any discussion? Roll call to adjourn, Council Archer?
Aye.
Council of Purdy?
Yes.
Council of Gunn?
Yes.
Council of Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Council of McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to adjourn at eight forty six. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.